Yeah, welcome all of you to be here tonight. I appreciate it very much for coming here. On Tuesday night. We start for our regular meeting tonight here on Tuesday, July twenty fifth, twenty twenty three, six thirty P M. Right here at the city council chambers and location right here is thirty six hundred Constitution Boulevard, West Valley City, Utah, A four one one nine. Roll call. We have Mayor see on Zoom right now, and we have Jake to F D C Manu also on Zoom. And here we have Don Christensen, William Weststones, and then Scott Harmon and me here at the public hearing tonight. I mean, to the diets tonight. The opening ceremony tonight, we have a council customer Scott Harmon. I will turn over to Scott.
Yeah, welcome all of you to be here tonight. I appreciate it very much for coming here on Tuesday night. We start for our regular meeting tonight here on Tuesday, July twenty fifth, twenty twenty three, six thirty P M. Right here at the city council chambers and location right here is thirty six hundred Constitution Boulevard, West Valley City, Utah, A four one one nine. Roll call. We have Mayor see on Zoom right now, and we have Jake to F D C Manu also on Zoom. And here we have Don Christensen, William Weststones, and then Scott Harmon and me here at the public hearing tonight. I mean, to the diets tonight. The opening ceremony tonight, we have a council customer Scott Harmon. I will turn over to Scott.
Thank you, Tom. Just I listened to a podcast yesterday, and they were talking about how Utah kind of has two holidays in July. Not kind of. We do have two holidays in July, but they both represent freedom and liberty and one for the nation and then one for the pioneers that came here for for freedom here to the West. And so it's a wonderful thing that we can celebrate freedom in July. And I'm grateful for that. If you'll join with me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Scott. And also, Councilman Laston, he is not here tonight. He's just so just let you know. Approval of minutes. July eighteen twenty twenty three. So I will turn over to the council. Promotion.
Approve those minutes. Second.
So a motion. Have a second. Okay, so you're in favor of this motion. Please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion passes unanimously. Thank you so much. Common period. Right here, we have thirty minutes, and this person three minutes per person in the monitor right here in front of you, so you can watch while you're speaking. The format, the not debate, no Q and A, and you speak directly to the mayor and the mayor are not here tonight. See on Zoom. So you gotta speak directly to me. Thirty minutes, and you can start right now. The first person is the Mike Markham. Please.
Hey, Mike Markham. Just on my usual bandwagon code enforcement. I missed last week, but I understand all of the new codes and everything passed last week. So I'm hoping our code enforcement officers are getting out there at seven o'clock in the morning and stay until six at night cruising the neighborhoods. Because trust me, there's plenty of work for them to do out there. Some of our main arteries look terrible. Some of the residential areas look terrible. I realize it's tough to get much done, though, with three day work weeks, which we seem to have a lot of in in July and other holidays. But hopefully, they're out hustling, doing what they were hired to do and getting some things done, and we can start seeing some changes. Now there's some some proper instructions for them to get out and do their job, because we have some real definite problems out there, real definite problems out there in the neighborhoods. I don't know how many of you get out and cruise your districts, but some people don't even have to cruise their districts to find issues. They just need to look around. So I wish we could get all of the council people writing up their neighbors and neighborhoods and whoever, because you know, to me, if you can't do that, you're you're in it. You're not on the council for the city or on the council for whatever you make a month. I don't know. But don't worry about making for votes, because the good people will vote for you. I've been told that there's a lot of people in my neighborhood that don't like me, but it's just the people with crappy yards and don't care. But the people with nice yards, they like me. So hopefully, code enforcement can get out, log some miles on those vehicles and get something done. Thanks.
Thank you. The second one is Kelly Pissau.
My name is Kelly Bertosch. My comments and questions are kind of been tromped on. My rights have been violated here. And I know that most of you know that I filed a formal complaint about your police chief. And I'm sure most of you have been led forward to that. So my request is any retaliation from your department heads of the P D. I'm holding you guys all totally accountable for repercussion. Now, I come in here today and filed another formal request, which I talked with the city recorder. I love this lady. She's a sweet person. She represents this city with kindness, gratitude, and what integrity I say, which I see very little accountability and very little transparency. To ask a simple question and be told that I'm going to be escorted out of this building. So I sat out in the heat for two and a half hours, where he again come and told me to come in the building after being told that I would be taken out. Why would I want to come in this building? I'm a citizen here. My rights are trampled on by your official. And I'm tired of that, because each one of you have to be held accountable for your own actions. I'm accountable for mine. And believe me, I pay enough taxes for all this stuff I have. I have no problem saying who, how, whatever I want, but yet you've added a whole paragraph here against me, because you cut the three minutes down, and now I can't talk any directly to any one of you. So I'm addressing the whole city itself. Accountability. Most of you guys hide behind that where the city. You don't work for the people in your own mind. You work for yourselves. And I've seen that be trampled on numerous times in this meeting. I'm not saying who. I'm saying it's been trampled on. Our citizens had this room filled with over a hundred people, and all stocked against that pay mark being a high density place. And you all flat right said, excuse me for all, because some of you were not there that time. And he flat right said, we don't care what you guys say. We're in the best interest for our city. No, you're not. You're not in the best interest of your city. You're not in the interest of the public. Her comment. So therefore, where's the accountability here, folks? You know what? You guys all work for us. Every one of us is citizens. You work for us.
Thank you.
Is that my time? Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now I'll turn over to the city manager. You have any?
Oh, yeah. You have, like, someone came late. If you want to come up to a microphone and just speak. Go ahead. No, I turned off my phone so it wouldn't me out. Jim V Sock five four nine one west. West Lockwood Drive, West Valley City. I don't do my own address very much. I'm also going to start off with talking about code enforcement. And once again, we went through this whole three or four months of going through a whole bunch of the codes, setting up what as a council, you guys wanted them to enforce. When the city manager was there, she went through a list, yes, no, got it all done. Supposedly, there's a new manual that's only a couple pages. My question is a heavy vehicle is defined of fourteen thousand pounds or more. If it's a semi, it looks like a semi, but the resident calls it a chicken coop. It's still a vehicle over fourteen thousand pounds. Why is this allowed to be on a residential property? It violates the ordinance that you guys changed from twelve to fourteen thousand pounds. Yet, for almost a year, August to be a year that I've been reporting it. There's also at least four other violations on that property. And code enforcement has chosen not to do anything about it. Change of government. Once again, there's fifty million reasons why we should do it. Time is is coming up. There's only a few more weeks for you guys to make that final decision for this election cycle, or it has to go into the next one. Give the voters a chance to vote on it. I have confidence they will make the right decision with all the things that you will be able to do as council people. If you want to set up meetings, you can have as many meetings as you want during the time. There's legislated that we have to have so many meetings. But I have confidence in the West Valley City residents to make the right decision. And I think they should get, we should get the right to vote on it. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else? Can I? I will turn over to the city manager. Do you have any comment tonight?
No, sir. Thank you.
But thank you. About the council. No? Okay, good. Let the move forward. We have two items tonight, public hearings that we have to. The first one, the application Z B Z dash three and dash twenty twenty three and can you? I will turn this one. Can you tell us a little bit about this one?
Absolutely. Thank you, sir. So this is a application or the application G P Z three dash twenty twenty three. Applicant is Mr. Russell Platt, and there are three actions you'll consider with this. The first is to amend the general plan showing the change of land use from large lot residential to low density residential. Also amendment of the zoning map to show it changes zone from A to R one eight. And then third, consider a resolution to authorize a development agreement that would go along with the proposed application. So this is a piece of property over at forty three oh one west and forty five seventy south. It's one and a half acres. And as you know, sir, the council has discussed this in two meetings prior to this.
Thank you. And I will turn over to I will have this one for the public hearing tonight. So anyone wants to come up to say something about this application, it's now your time.
So I'm always concerned about having open spaces in our cities and changing our agriculture in a residential really cut that down, start putting more houses, more density. I was looking at some maps just recently in the audience and trying to find where there could be some close parks. So maybe the consideration maybe to possibly make it into a park or walkway. I didn't see any animals on the property at one time. I'm sure it was used for like horses or maybe kept sheep on it. But does look like a nice piece that actually can be turned into a park that can serve the people on this side of the canal that's in that neighborhood. So that's all I have. So thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Kelly Bertosch. As a concerned citizen of West Valley City, I am called. You guys keep developing all these housing. Like he was saying, you're choking out our heritage by allowing all this property to be redeveloped. Now, our infrastructure already sucks here, and if you can't agree to me with that, we got a problem. We don't have the roadways. We don't have the power. We don't have the water to keep doing this stuff. When I moved in our area, I used to throw water clear out the middle of the street with what little water pressure I had. Now I can't even water my yard, because you kept adding into my area. So zoning is a big issue for me, because you guys rezone my neighbor's house and created a train wreck. Let's put it that way. You made a junkyard out of my neighbor's yard. I get to see it every day, and I got other neighbors here that can testify to that. You know, what you guys are doing and looking at this and trying to think good, you're not doing good. We, the public, do not want to keep developing all of what left we have here. We need to save some of our ground for somewhere down the future. Instead of putting in all these housing and stuff, put in some more parks, put in some more community things for us as the public can do. You know, like I've asked before, instead of doing some of this stuff, why don't you guys work with us as a community? Instead of just yourselves and running off of what you want to choose. You don't listen. We, the people, don't want this stuff. And again, you don't listen, and you just go ahead and change whatever you want to do, because you say it's in the best interest. Well, I'm saying this is not in the best interest of most of our communities. And you've raped our community of farmland from our kids' futures to be able to enjoy and know what Hunter, Granger, Chesterfield used to be. You've claimed it all as West Valley City, and it hasn't gone very well. And to rezone stuff, it's wrong. You just keep making changes and adding more problems and grievances for other community members like you have myself. Now, like I said, the first piece started rolling downhill when you guys created that nightmare for me. And I'm going to hold my gun to this as a citizen of Utah and as a citizen that I was born and raised in Hunter. I don't claim to sway West Valley anymore. I won't. I say I live in Hunter. And if there's any way that I could evict myself from your city, I would. That's how I feel about it. And I'm sure there's a lot of other citizens here that live in our community that feel the same way. Thank you.
Okay, go ahead.
Good evening. I'm Russell Platt, the applicant at this piece. And I'd be happy to sell the property to the city and do a park here. If that was something that was a realistic option. Looking at something that's an acre and a half in today's world, I understand that change is difficult. Change is hard. It's things have been a certain way for a long time, and it's hard to look at them any other way. But putting four homes on an acre and a half is, and I'm an architect and a developer and a builder. This is the least dense of any project that I've been fortunate to work with in the last several years. Here along the Wasatch Front, we're all aware that we're short of housing to a horrible degree. And I have a lot of investors that have looked at this land with me and have said, Russ, you got to get townhomes on there. We can do twelve units to the acre. We could do eighteen units on an acre and a half, and then we can start making some money. He said, but that's not the right thing to do with this piece. I would totally fight that myself. To do four homes and follow the city's guideline on what new homes are hoped to be is something that we've agreed to. Our development agreement with the city would stipulate that we have to follow the guidelines of new homes, which means I have to do a two thousand square foot, a main floor level, a three car garage, and a full basement in there. And then I crunch the numbers and I say, is someone going to want a home like this in this area? And I believe they will. Fortunately for me, well, and unfortunately, I lived in this, the home that's there for three years. And I love the community. I love the neighborhood, and I want to do something nice and special and help raise the value of being in that community. That's our goal. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay. If not, I will close the public hearing, and I will turn over to this item to the council for motion discussion.
Can you put the slide back up of the map? That one right there? Yeah. So one thing I just want to talk about, you see the the big field at the top? That's the Brock Farm. The city just purchased that for a large park. And so those of you that wanted a park in the neighborhood, we're going to give you your wish. It's going to be a great park right there on Maple Meadows and Pasquey right there in the corner. Again, to, I'm in real estate, and I'll echo what Russ said. Any other developer that would come in would want to do eight or ten or twelve or sixteen units in this spot. And and I wouldn't be in favor of that. I would definitely not vote for that. So four units in this spot, I think makes sense for our neighborhood. The other thing that I think, and just so that you all know, we've we've have we studied this three weeks in a row? So we've we've been talking about this and reviewing it and and thinking about this for three weeks. But if if I owned land and wanted to develop it, I would want to do that within the laws of of the city, and the ordinances lay out how that can happen. And the city law says, well, you can do this if you get approval of the city council, and this is your your guideline. This is what you can change it to. And there are some things that you can't change it to unless unless we go against our our guidelines, which we're not going to do. But but I talked I talked this morning, or not this morning, but earlier about freedom in the opening and liberty and why we have this great country and why the pioneers came here is to have freedom to do what they want to do, to make a living. And and part of that is land development, and it started with forty acres two hundred years ago, and now it's we're we're talking about an acre and a half. And as long as the ordinance keeps them from doing things that the city wouldn't want. So I'm in favor of of allowing landowners to develop as long as it doesn't, it's not detrimental to to the city. So that's all.
Thank you.
So I'll give a motion to approve. Second.
Okay, we have a motion. Have a second. We'll turn over to a city recorder. Nico.
This is ordinance twenty three dash twenty four.
That right. The one is twenty three dash twenty four. Do a Nico comment.
Councilman Fifty Sumanu?
Aye.
Councilman Whitestone?
Yes.
Councilman Harmon?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Hune?
Yes.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
And Mayor Ling?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. And the ordinance twenty three dash twenty five. Turn over to the council.
I would move to approve ordinance twenty three dash twenty five.
Motion. And we need a second. So we have a motion and a second. We'll turn over to a city recorder. Nico Kamat, please.
Councilman Fifty Sumanu?
Aye.
Councilman Whitestone?
Yes.
Councilman Harmon?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Hune?
Yes.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
And Mayor Ling?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, thank thank you. The application, second one, is application Z B Z dash four and dash twenty twenty three. And we'll have this open for the public. So anyone wants to come up to microphone and speak about this application, please.
Thank you. And the ordinance twenty three dash twenty five. Turn over to the council.
I would move to approve ordinance twenty three dash twenty five.
Motion. And we need a second. So we have a motion and a second. We'll turn over to a city recorder. Nico Kamat.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Hune?
Yes.
Councilman Harmon?
Yes.
Councilman Whitestone?
Yes.
Councilman Fifty Sumanu?
Aye.
And Mayor Ling?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Next one is the resolution twenty three dash one zero two. We'll turn it to the council.
Motion to approve resolution twenty three dash one zero two. Second.
Okay, a motion and a second. We'll turn over to our city recorder. Nico Kamat, please.
Councilman Fifty Sumanu?
Aye.
Councilman Whitestone?
Yes.
Councilman Harmon?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Hune?
Yes.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
And Mayor Ling?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, thank thank you. The application, second one, is application Z B Z dash four and dash twenty twenty three. And we'll have this open for the public. So anyone wants to come up to microphone and speak about this application, please.
The nice thing about freedom, I have the right to speak as many times as this is addresses. There again, you showed totally disregard to the community. You just proved it again. You didn't listen to anything but your three weeks of meetings. Again, why are you not communicating this out to the public? That's what I'm asking. Where's your transparency? You don't post any of this stuff. You don't. You post whatever you choose that you want to have on a site. And that's a problem, because there's no transparency with you guys. You do whatever you want. That's why I say you hide behind your monitors and sit in them big comfortable desks or chairs and do what you choose to. And like I said, and I even talked to your city manager about the corruption in this city. This is a perfect example of it. Corruption. How much are you guys being paid by the developers under the table to be pushing this stuff? You know, again, you guys work for us as a public, not you as a city managers and not the mayor. You guys all work for us. You answer to me and to these people right here and to the people that's watching this on T V. And I hope that they would encourage themselves to step out of their homes and come to these meetings to see just how much corruption there really is going on. And again, you totally have disrespect for what the public has asked. You don't care. You just sit up there and bob your heads and say your things, and lo and behold, we just lost properties. And you know what? This is not raising property values. As a matter of fact, what you've created has dropped my property value. And you know what? I wish a lot of people in this city would pull their heads out and step up and say, we're tired of this. And then I won't be the only one here complaining. And I can guarantee it. If you feel I'm complaining, you've already made, I'm already well-known here, so you guys know that. You've already violated many rights, and you've even crossed into HIPAA. So again, I hope your city attorney is marking this down. You crossed into HIPAA. So what gives you guys that right? None. That's between me and my medical doctor, and it's nothing between you as a city or a government to go and ask my family members. This here is me. I live in this home with Zionist circle. I pay all my property taxes. I pay your salaries. I'm part of paying it along with these people. And you know what? We're tired of you not listening to us. That's the problem. You shake your head and do what you choose to do. So I want to know what corruption is there? You know what? It's up to us to find out what it is as citizens here, and I hope that we can find that dirt on you. And it starts right at the top. Well, please, listen. You guys cannot just keep changing stuff and rezoning stuff as your pleasure. Like I said, you already created a junkyard, which you come after me for four or six tires that was not even accessible to you, and your ordinance came into my yard and checked it. That's wrong, and it's against the law, as a matter of fact, a trespassing. So where's the accountability come back on you guys? Listen to the citizens, because we're tired of this. Do what you want. It's not the good old boy club. You guys work for us as the citizens. So please, take advice and listen to what people have been saying, not just tonight, but for the last several years. I've watched it in many, many, many meetings. You just do what you want. You don't listen. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Well, good evening. Paul Whipple, Zionist circle. He always not the only one who's really angry about this. We're running out of water, we're running out of roads. And what are we doing about it? An acre and a half and you can't zone that for a park? Or something for the kids to play on? When's the stop, guys? When does the stop? Do we have to come here every time and vote you out? In order for it to stop, we're not obligated to provide housing for everyone who wants to move here. That's not how it runs. So is he right on corruption, or is he right, bad, right on accountability, which is a the clock is ticking down. And assuming there won't be any more free space and any more roads, because the cars are just there. If you look around now, how many condos and apartments are scheduled to take place and be occupied? Take a look. There's a ton. Traffic's already bad now. I told you a few weeks ago, you might as well develop a fine car and get rid of the roads, put houses on it. Because that's what it's coming to. We just don't have the room, and yet, an acre and a half you can't do something with? We can't buy that from him for future development? Before prices go up? When does it stop? Let me ask you this again. When does it stop? Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? I close this, no one, and I will close this public hearing. I will turn over to the council. Please, any action, a motion and discussion?
In regard to application GPZ-4-2023 on 4358 West, 3500 South, which no one has talked about yet, I would move that we approve ordinance 23-26.
Second. Thank you. Have a first motion and a second. I have a few words I want to say before we can do the CD recorder. Okay, thank you. I just want to share with you, the people here tonight, and thank you so much for coming out to be the part of this process. We we post this one on a calendar or website two weeks before we make decision, and we studied through this item before we make decision. And we're not working with builder, developer, or anyone else behind door or anything like you accusing us as a backdoor. Alley. I came here, I love this area long ago. You can see the 5600 West. 15 years ago, 20 years ago, it's a pasture. It's horses and other things. We love it. But since, you know that, Salt County will have over 500,000 people gonna come up here, come to this county from now until 2020, 2030. That's a study from the state. And we have to adapt. I would love to, my backyard, I have a big empty space so I can look through over way, way, way somewhere. But unfortunately, I cannot do that. We have to share. And these people, they come here. They submit in these two items. They follow the city guideline. They follow the city guideline. And we work here, we volunteer. Do you know how much we make a month? How much, how much we make a year for this job? Nothing. Not enough money for me to go to lunch or dinner or put gas in my car. This is a part-time job. It's not my full-time job. I cannot live with this job. I don't, I don't, I don't remember how much I have for this one. Maybe $800 a month.
No, David.
Yeah. $800 a month. Okay, you think it, maybe they get taxes and pay so much money for those guys sitting up there. No. You can check us out on the website. We're here just like you. Exactly, just like you. We love this city. When we try to do it right, we make sure go proper general and doing the right thing here in the city. Every one of us has his own opinion, and we respect that. That's the firm government we have right now in this city. So we get the majority vote, we'll pass the resolution ordinance. I just want to share with you, it's an old boy club. I personally don't like the old boy, old boy club. That's why I'm here for. I fight for that. I am. So I just want to let you know that. No corruption. We doing here, we volunteer to doing this. A backdoor. And I will turn it over to the CD recorder for this item, ordinance 23-26 for roll call, please.
Councilman Fiddy Sumanu?
Hi.
Councilman Whitstone?
Yes.
Councilman Harmon?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Hune?
Yes.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
And Mayor Ling?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Next one, ordinance 23-27.
Motion to approve ordinance 23-27. Second.
We have a motion, have a motion and a second. We'll turn over to CD recorder Nico Kama.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Hune?
Yes.
Councilman Harmon?
Yes.
Councilman Whitstone?
Yes.
Councilman Fiddy Sumanu? And Mayor Ling?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Resolution 23-103.
Motion to approve 23-103.
A motion, we need a second.
Second.
So we have a motion, have a second. Turn over to CD recorder for roll call, please.
Councilman Fiddy Sumanu? Councilman Whitstone?
Yes.
Councilman Harmon?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Hune?
Thank you, yes.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
And Mayor Ling?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Just like I said earlier, we, we studied for one week before we come out here, so very much we go very quick here and just to try to inform you, resolution 23-109. Turn over to the council. Oh, yeah, wait, city manager will. Thank you.
Okay, you bet, sir. So this is a resolution that would allow the police department to enter into a memorandum of understanding with the state to accept a grant. This is with the Attorney General's Office and helps us to participate in the Internet Crimes Against Children Task Force, or the ICAC Task Forces as known as, and would bring us $15,000 in funding to help in that effort.
Thank you. We'll turn over to the council.
Motion to approve resolution 23-109. Second.
Motion, have a second. We'll turn over to CD recorder Nico Kama for roll call, please.
Councilman Fiddy Sumanu?
Hi.
Councilman Whitstone?
Yes.
Councilman Harmon?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Hune?
Yes.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
And Mayor Ling?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Concerned agenda tonight, we have one item, and I will, is there any very much normal city manager?
Sir, the only thing that's out of the ordinary on this one is it does involve a little bit more money than usual. This is a Parkway Boulevard project, but it is the same type of resolution as goes forward in these projects. So it's acceptance of a warranty deed, public utility easement and temporary construction easement. Because there's federal money involved, the federal grant will pay for the most of that, but the city is responsible for $2,809 of it.
Thank you.
Sorry, total cost is 40, about 42,000?
41,496, something like that.
Our, our part is just the 2,800.
Correct.
Thank you.
Pretty good though. We'll turn over to the council.
Motion to approve resolution 23-110. Second.
We have a motion, have a second. We'll turn over to CD recorder Nico Kama for roll call, please.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Hune?
Yes.
Councilman Harmon?
Yes.
Councilman Whitstone?
Yes.
Councilman Fiddy Sumanu? And Mayor Ling?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Number 10 right here, new business consideration of Bangor Highway intersection. Turn over to a city manager.
Thanks, sir. So we don't have anything to present, presentation-wise or new information-wise, but the council wanted to talk about this for the purpose of expressing a message to UDOT on your preference concerning pedestrian access to Bangor.
Thank you.
We'll turn over to the council.
Yeah, this I'd like to see if we can put together a letter from the council, have the mayor sign it, maybe we all sign it to UDOT that would voice our concern and our opinion on the pedestrian tunnels that UDOT's suggesting for Bangor. Because of the concerns of the citizenry on the tunnels or the elements that they attract. So pedestrian tunnels can often, worst case is, well, best case is gonna attract litter and debris that gets blown in there, but worst case, drugs, graffiti, homeless. So, and UDOT has suggested in their latest plan, I think, three tunnels between 35th and 41. And they don't have any tunnels, the rest of Bangor, south end of Bangor, and so if they can do it for the rest of Bangor, they can do it for us. So I think the council is pretty much in alignment to have a letter to UDOT stating such, but wanted to have a few minutes that we could discuss and finalize those thoughts so that we can get a letter to them by, I think, August 2nd is their deadline. So since we don't have council meeting on the 1st, we're, we're doing this now as an extra new business item in our regular meeting.
I think as they presented to us and the need for these tunnels, I didn't see that need anymore between 41st and 35th than between 78th and 90th. And I don't see why we can't, you know, it took a lot to get UDOT to say that they could put a pedestrian overpass over Bangor. It took at least one and probably two deaths before they would even consider it. And then suddenly, it became the thing to do at every intersection. Well, I don't want to have a a criminal incident affecting our children in an underpass or a tunnel, as they want to call them, before they realize that, oh, these might not be a good idea. If they can put it over Bangor in other places, they can put it over Bangor in West Valley. We're not the armpit of the world as UDOT many times has treated us. And so I think we do need a letter, a very strong letter from the council saying we are not in favor of underpasses for the pedestrians.
Thank you. The same here, I support no tunnel in our city regarding the 41 result to 35 West, I mean, to 35 South. Last time, we had multiple, I think, many people, they came here and they voiced their concern about it, and I think we need to protect. Would have to listen to them, that we, we got, we represent them and we speak for them. All the citizens in this city, and I agree with my callers here, no tunnel from 41 to 35. Nico, is anybody up there on the screen want to say something or no? Let me know.
Looks like the mayor's jumping in here.
Okay.
Yes, I would like to agree with everything else that has been said. We do have a tunnel at Mountain View and Hunter High, and I receive quite a few complaints and notifications of wrongdoings in those tunnels, so why would we want to do it again? So I agree with the council as to sending a letter to UDOT saying that we would, we do not want them at any cost.
And Mayor, that tunnel at Mountain View and Hunter High is also a vehicle tunnel. So it's wide and open, whereas there can, the ones on Bangor are going to be pedestrian only. Which makes it even smaller.
Sounds like we have a consensus or at least a majority sentiment. My question is just procedural, and I a majority sentiment. My question is just procedural and I agree with what's already been spoken, but um, we keep, we use the generic term letter. I'm hoping that we have something a stronger or some other form of correspondence. Maybe with a little bit more formality there. I know we don't have jurisdiction over the final you dot workings, but one, uh, who's drafting that? How is that submitted? Um, those are my questions there.
Okay, so, uh, we send over to the to you to have the letter or to, what is the procedure here to?
Sure. If you would like, uh, what I would do is sort of reiterate what I think I've heard, which is the council's preferences to send public comment to you dot to not have any tunnels on the project as they're doing the intersection, um, improvements. The only question I had is I heard some people say between 4100 to 35th and others say not any at any cost. So maybe you can clarify that, that one little point there. Other than that, my only other question is do you want us to make any other comment or just only about tunnels? I don't, I don't want to open up any unnecessary cans of worms either, but just, just asking.
I think no tunnels.
Right.
Um, if we're going to have homeless and drug issues in tunnels between 41 and 35th, I think that the other tunnels they're thinking about are further north in the industrial areas.
Around the 201 area, yeah.
And that's going to be even more concerned for drugs and homeless. So my opinion is no tunnels if we can, uh, strongly word it that way. Um, but then can staff draft a letter for us and then we can, um, review it and wordsmith it and.
Sure. Yep. No issue there at all.
And then we can, uh, hopefully we come to an approval and get that out Monday.
Yeah, that shouldn't be any problem.
That sound okay, mayor?
That sounds right. Thank you.
Yeah. So the last, I mean, uh, item number 11 right here, motion for close session, uh, any, uh, we don't have any close session tonight, right? So, yeah. Um, can we wait for mayor? I believe August 8th or something, but the next meeting we can have. Okay, uh, last item with, uh,
We will not have any meeting next week.
Yeah.
On August 1st, because that's national night out, so.
That's, that I'm going to say, we have one more item is, uh, item number 12 is adjourned, but before adjourned, we did let you know, uh, we have a na- national night out, um, August, the first weekend, August, uh, Tuesday, we have no meeting here, a study meeting or the, uh, um, regular meeting. So we're gonna see you the second week of August. Uh, and, uh, last item right here to adjourn that one more.
Motion to adjourn.
Okay, thank you. So we are adjourned. Thank you so much for coming out tonight.